Hon.
Oh, three. May 26th. It's called this regular meeting, Marion County Board of Supervisors. To order, you notice how I delayed that long enough for you to walk around the table? Is that good?
Yeah, thanks.
Jake, vocal.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Very good. I would entertain a motion. We need to make one, one agenda amendment, and that is turn to page last. Item number 16. We're going to table that one for today. Still can approve the agenda as presented, but that on that one, we will table that one until our next meeting.
Okay.
All right. So just want to make that note, and with that, is there a motion to approve this morning's agenda?
I make motion, we approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Any communications received, Jake?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Public comments, this is a portion of our meeting, the public can speak on items not specifically listed on this morning's agenda. Board cannot act on those items, but they could become topics for future board meetings. Are there any public comments, items not on this morning's agenda? Mr. Bull.
Good morning. I did want to provide an update to you folks concerning information from the Supreme Court of Iowa. On May 22nd, Chief Justice Christensen issued another declaration that has some consequences and effects to how and when operations will become more normalized. Put it in perspective, all jury trials now may not begin until September 14th of 2020, 9/14 of 2020. We are still waiting for guidance from a task force they created called the Jumpstart Jury Task Force, which will provide us policies and procedures for resumption of jury trials. I would indicate that I was asked last week to provide and determine alternative locations for court, and I am working with Jake as it relates to our insurance, different facilities that require us to have different types of insurance, so we are hopping through that process, so to speak. I am optimistic that come September 14th, when we start jury trials, we will have a location that we can do them. Secondly, any non-jury trial, so the bench trial, now cannot start until July 13th. One exception. Counties may have non-jury trials before this date if the courthouse is open to the public and court operations meet recommended COVID-19 safety protocols established by the state court administrators. They haven't done that yet, to the best of my knowledge. So as a result, we probably, we, our courthouse will be open, based on the guidelines that you folks have provided and authorized, but at this moment in time until we get some specific guidance, we cannot have non-jury trial for July 13th. I have an associate district that I'm working with, it's his desire to be open for business sooner rather than later, and he would like to start to get our dockets moving. We are trying to make sure that nothing we do has to relate to everyday court, so what I've just told you folks is about either non-jury trials or jury trial. There's a whole heck of a lot that we do outside of those things, and when can we start to do those things in person? And it appears that we are waiting for some type of protocol, safety protocols to be established, to see whether or not we meet those, or whether or not we will continue to do courts the way we have over the last two and a half months or so, which is purely just doing it via Zoom. That's my update, Mark.
Very good. Thank you, Ed, appreciate it.
Hey, Ed.
Yes, sir.
Bring me up to speed on why we're looking for another location for jury trials?
All counties attorneys were tasked through the chief judge of their district with locating potential locations that could accommodate and allow for the practicing of social distancing. That, that's why if they tell us we can't use our current environment, we have a secondary place. Your guess is as good as mine, I know that, for example, long before this, order came down, Dallas County was anticipating a jury trial on July 11th that I think they were going to do at the fire station in Dallas County because they were bringing in something in excess of 500 jurors, it was a multi-person homicide case. So if you think about, how are you going to put, even for us, the smallest trial that we do, we bring in 70 jurors. So where would we put 70 jurors right now if we had to socially distance them? And I don't know that we could do it if we were back, if we hadn't moved, if we were in our main courthouse with everything else going on every day, I don't know where, how we would accommodate 70 people once. What they keep trying to figure out is how do we encourage the public to feel safe participating in jury service? And when you start to talk about, this will be the most people other than a church service they will most likely have seen, since we really don't have sporting events or other large gatherings of people, all of a sudden you walked into a room with 250 or 300 people getting ready for jury because it's a homicide trial, how many of people of the public would actually show up to, to complete their jury service? So. Steve, I don't have a good answer otherwise, other than to tell you that's what I was directed to do by judges I appear in front of, which was identify other locations, in my view was, I wanted to identify locations that weren't going to charge us any money to be at. So I'm looking to partner with, for example, or communities that we gave property to. So our number one spot to look at to hold a jury trial on an off-location would be the Pleasantville Memorial Hall. They are set up to allow for, they have two floors, it's ADA compliant, it has ADA bathrooms, all of those types of things. We also looked at the old administration gym, Knoxville Public Schools Administration Building, they have a gym, and that one works fine for the same reasons, ADA compliant, ADA accessibility, ADA bathrooms. The problem with them is, starting in November, assuming for the sake of argument that there are students in school and they are playing organized sports, that's where they have basketball practice. So our trials would have to be done by 3:30 or so every day if we're going to use that location. So that's where we're at, I can tell you that every, even the big, the big counties, Hope County, that's just built two courthouses, or remodeled two major quarters, dealing with the exact same thing, how are they going to locate, you know, in that case, seven to eight courtrooms that could accommodate that many people? It's, it's going to be significant, hopefully, if we're not starting jury trials until the middle of September, maybe we will have vastly different recommendations from the CDC by that point about large gatherings.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Are there any other public comment items, again, items not on this morning's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Would entertain a motion to approve this morning's consent agenda?
Make motion, we approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Very good, on to business, first is Resolution 2020-47. This is a cooperation resolution with other governmental units for local workforce area development 11. So Keisha?
Yep. So this morning, this is the 2080, and in regards to this, this is what we consider Area 11. I've had Ed look through this, and Ed, do you have any comments at all before I turn it over to Heather Garcia, which she's our director for this board?
No, ma'am, in fact, we've been working, I think, over the last 60 days or so, offering our input, and it was like any other major 2080 that involves multiple counties, you had, what, seven or eight different county attorneys giving their input and going back and forth and then to the administrators, and what probably could have been done in 15 minutes by six laypeople who would have done just as good a job, took 90 days, and 12 attorneys.
Yep, so.
Well, oh, thanks, Ed.
Heather did a good job putting, putting it together and taking all the pieces, so I'll turn it over to Heather Garcia. So Heather, if you could explain a little bit?
Good morning, supervisors, thank you Supervisor Johnner. Mr. Bull, that was extremely well said, we've had two full-time civil attorneys look at it, another civil, another attorney with a lot of civil experience, and then also a former Secretary of State look at it, so it's really been combed over, I think it is the longest shared liability agreement in the terms of workforce in the whole country, it's a whopping 10 pages, and there are a lot of safeguards built in to ensure that county supervisors are not left on the hook ever again for mismanagement of funding. We've also had ICAP look it over, and our board carries insurance in the event that something goes awry, we do have added insurance that covers you beyond what the counties have for insurance. So it's pretty, it's pretty much the Fort Knox of 2080 agreements in the workforce world.
All right. Well, Heather, thank you. Just a couple of questions, and I don't know Keisha if you want to handle these, or Heather, if you're going to handle these questions. I guess my first question is, aside from the liability issues and working through those, I'm glad those have been ironed out, considering some past history here, what, what do we get out of this? What does Marion County get out of a cooperation resolution like this regarding workforce development?
Sure, and Marion County has always been a part of Region 11, which is eight counties, and with that, the focus seems to have been in the past on the metro areas, and the center is located on the south side of Des Moines right now, it was in the East Village before, and by having local input, which is really the design behind the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act that was put into place in 2014, it's really designed to give more local input. So that's part of the reason the chief elected officials in the counties are responsible for the funding, is kind of to make sure that they're involved in making sure that their counties and their local areas are served with the Title I funding, as well as receiving support from all of the agencies involved in the workforce, the workforce act and the workforce system. So Iowa Workforce Development, we have two different service providers for adult and dislocated worker, and the other one is for youth, and those are Iowa Employment Solutions and Children and Families of Iowa. Their focus has been, over the last few years, to get more involved in the rural areas. Obviously, with transportation gaps, a lot of people who really need service are out in the rural area without the ability to get to Des Moines, so they're really working hard to try to get to where those people are and get them back to work.
Good.
So, so Heather, in a, in a thumbnail sketch, I, I guess I'll rephrase a little bit, what does workforce development do?
Okay, so with the board.
And you can give this in three, three sentences or less, that'd be great, because I don't want to take a ton of time, but, and, and understanding that, you know, we have, we have media folks on right now, and we have other folks that aren't that familiar with workforce development. There have been changes, you talk about Title I funding, a lot of people don't know what that is, so maybe, can you just give us a brief synopsis, what does it do?
Sure, with Title I funding, that funding is designed to help people that are low income or people who've lost their job through no fault of their own, access additional training to get them back into work or to get them connected with a new career. And that's the primary focus of what the local board oversees. So that's where the shared liability agreement comes in, that's where the board is going to watch over how those training dollars are spent in the local areas. And then they also connect the other elements of the workforce system. So Iowa Workforce Development is our state agency that oversees workforce development overall, and the board's a small part of making sure that they're connected with the local area. Vocational rehabilitation and the Department of Education are the other partners within the workforce system.
All right, very good, and, and my last question, how much does it cost us?
It won't cost you anything other than, I suppose, time. Keisha has been attending all of our meetings and has been involved in several phone calls, so we do try to stay connected and get her input and ideas, and Keisha, you could probably attest to more how your investment has been involved in this system, but it's not going to cost the county any money because the money comes through the, the Department of Labor.
Okay.
And this makes us compliant, so we really, the short of the deal is, we really don't have a choice, we need to be compliant, and so in sight.
All right, now.
In compliance, we need to be able to, we have to sign the agreement, all right? If we want to choose to petition the governor and try to go on our own, be separate, or we align with Region 11, or we go with another region, we don't have the option of just saying, no, we're not doing it.
If we want Title I funding?
Right, but there isn't any, there isn't anybody out there that doesn't do it, because you want to be compliant as a state.
Well, because you, you want the Title I funding, you want access to it, so everybody does it, because this is our vehicle to get it done, right?
Yes.
There is no option to get Title I funding other than through workforce development?
My understanding correct, Heather?
Correct.
Yes.
And I actually don't think there's an option to say that you don't want Title I funding either.
There's no options. Sorry, I'm being hungry, I've only had two cups of coffee this morning, this is bad.
I have connected Tiffany with the workers and with Brian, and Brian is the, what is he, is he Children and Families, what is he, Heather?
He's with Iowa Employment Solutions.
Oh, sorry, yeah, okay.
And they oversee adult and dislocated worker programming.
And I have really stressed that we in the rule need to be able to see presence, and, and that has helped, and I feel that we're making, we're making headway there.
Okay, I think that's the key issue, Keisha, that apart from whether we're required, not required, it's will we see activity in Marion County as a result of our participation? Because that's always been the big question mark, I know Carla and I have talked about this over the years. So hopefully, that means that we'll have a greater presence in Marion County, because these are our tax dollars too.
Correct.
Coming back to us.
Yep.
Very good, thank you. Heather, thank you for those explanations, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Heather, thank you, Ed.
I mean, put you on the spot, Steve, do you have any questions?
No, how do you know it?
With that, would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Make motion, we approve Resolution 2020-47.
I'll second that.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. It's approved.
Thank you, Heather.
Heather, thank you.
Thank you, have a great day, guys.
Yep, you too.
You too, you too. Next, we have Resolution 2020-46, this is a local option sales and service tax transfer, we do this on a regular basis, Jake, maybe give us the...
Sure, the brief version is this is kind of an internal administrative function for us, for Michaela and the Treasurer's Office to be able to move designated $300,000 from our local option sales tax fund into our debt service fund to use towards a portion of the principal and interest on the law enforcement center construction payments. So the Treasurer, myself and the Treasurer, it's two pieces on our, in our process, and we are not allowed to transfer between funds like that, being these very defined funds with defined uses, without the supervisor's authority. So annually, for the past several years, supervisors have been moving funds from local option into the debt service to help assist that payment, which then reduces the debt levy that's required on all the taxpayers to pay off, to make those principal and interest payments.
Thank you, Jake, so what's the amount that we are transferring?
$300,000.
Okay, and this is for debt service only?
Yes, sir, it goes into the debt service for the principal and interest that are due Gen 1.
And that's on the law enforcement center?
Law enforcement only, that's the only, that's the only issuance you have left, is the law enforcement center construction, and that is done in, our final payment is FY24.
FY24, very good, thank you, Jake, appreciate it. Steve, Keisha, any questions for Jake?
No, I appreciate it, Jake, thank you for bringing this forward to us.
Very good, would entertain a motion on this resolution.
Make motion, we approve Resolution 2020-46.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Jake, thank you. Next, we have an appointment, Pella Library Board of Trustees, a term from 7:1 2020 through 6:30 2023. Kristi Leonard is the nominee for this appointment.
Right. So just quickly, I personally do not know Kristi, this, Kristi's name was brought forth from Mara Strickler, she is the new person in charge of the library in Pella, and they, they went out and searched for an appointment, the board, I believe, is recommends to the city council, and then the council approves a representative from Marion County on the Pella Library Board.
So this is coming with a recommendation from the new?
Correct.
From the new head of the Pella Library?
The person that has been doing it, the term expired and they chose, or I'm not sure exactly why, but they needed a new appointee, and maybe that, they had done two terms.
Okay.
So, and I, I see Don is on, I don't know if Don wanted to speak to that from the City of Pella or not?
Appreciate it. Don, Mayor Dour, do you have anything to add to this?
No, no, not to this one.
All right, very good, thank you.
Kristi Leonard is the recommendation, she resides within the region, the area that needs to be in, has been recommended by the City of Pella and the Library Director, being Marion County's representative.
Thank you. Keisha, Steve, any questions, discussion?
No.
Very good, would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Kristi Leonard to the Pella Library Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Second.
Jake?
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Next, we have a renewal of a cigarette permit application, all right, looks like we have two of them, first for Keener Oil Company and New Star in Pella. Jake, are you wanting to take these separately or together?
Unless you guys have an issue, they can be together.
Well, let's ask the question, are there any issues, Jason or Ed, on, on either of these applications?
I would say, my recommendation, this is Jason here, my recommendation is that you would renew them at this time. The New Star, obviously, we've talked about in past, past meetings, different things, we're still kind of having a watchful eye in regards to that. I haven't had many complaints lately on the New Star on Idaho Drive there, but I have had some on the ones here in the City of Knoxville, so that's more of a City of Knoxville situation, but we'll be working with them to kind of address some of those issues.
Okay, but still recommending approval, Jason?
Yeah, I would at this point.
Okay, Ed, anything to add?
No, I don't have any legal cause for you to be on firm footing to say deny at this point.
Very good.
Administrator, they completed their applications and submitted the appropriate funds.
Okay, very good, so we'll take these in together? Is there any discussion for the board?
No, I don't.
Steve?
No.
Okay. With that, in the commentary, would entertain a motion on these renewal permit applications.
Make motion, we approve the permit applications for Keener Oil and New Star.
Second.
Jake?
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye, very good, thank you. Next, we have discussion on a special event application for, I think it's Karen, is it Corinne, I never?
I'm not sure.
I forgot to ask her how to pronounce that. Yoga and Wellness Studio, this is yoga on the lawn Saturdays from May 30th, 2020 through August 29th of 2020. Do we have anybody from the studio? Doesn't sound like it or look like it. So comments on the application, I know Chris, you sent some notes out via email to the board, that we've got Farmer's Market, which we've approved as well, and the City of Knoxville has approved on the west side of the square, correct?
Correct, so we approved Knoxville Farmer's Market from 7:15 a.m. till noon on Saturdays, running through October. They will be utilizing electricity from the gazebo area and the water on the west side of the courthouse, so a garden hose and electrical cords will be running from courthouse to where they're setting up on the west side, that'd be my only issue at all is, if we're going to do yoga behind Farmer's Market booths, because that'd be the only logical place to do it on the west lawn, there'd be extension cords and running water already on that place.
And no way to accommodate that? You don't know how bigger classes are?
And that's, that's the question I have, is how, how big is it?
I think it varies since it's free.
How much yard space? If this is a, a small venue or a smaller venue, I, I'm sure we could make arrangements looking into other locations on the courthouse property. My concern would be somebody tripping over an electrical cord or getting unplugged, or just the all-around hazard of it in general from a liability standpoint, would be my only concern, utilizing both places on the west.
I think they use some in the east, my mother participated in it, and so I do know on the east side, so I didn't know if there's any room, you know?
Well, it was, it was pretty popular, you know, last year when it was done, and I thought Kathy did a great job.
Yeah.
Would it be, would it be acceptable from a board standpoint to go back and at least ask her about options, considering what we have for Farmer's Market?
I think that would be, probably the right thing to do.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to just not approve it out of hand, I would like to at least give an opportunity to see if there's something we can work out. I think it's neat to have activity on the square on Saturday.
Yeah, no, I agree, and so I didn't know if we could, I mean.
So, Chris, do you mind giving her a ring?
No, I'd be more than happy to if I can get contact information, it's probably on the application.
In the application?
Yep.
Because the only, the, the only available spot would be anything on the north side of our square.
Good.
The issue we're going to run into anywhere on the south is the new fire service.
Okay.
Runs from, basically in front of the theater.
Yeah.
Underground, so the south side's going to get tore up to get that new service, that water service in.
Right.
So the south side will effectively be off as well, but anywhere on the north side, I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with her and see if we can make space.
So let's, let's talk and see if there's an option, and if not?
I see on her site, Brian, she says the west side of the courthouse lawn, but she says the northwest or southwest corner, so she's kind of limited herself to a corner of that, so maybe it will work on one of the other corners on the north side, I don't know.
No, I'd be happy to have a conversation with her and hopefully have something in place for the next board meeting.
Okay, so I guess what we would do from an action item perspective is just instruct, Chris needs to be to contact Kathy, get more information on the application, and see if there are some options considering other events taking place on the square.
She's wanting to start this weekend.
Yeah.
So are you, are we good with approving, or no, not approving?
I, I think we need to find out some of the things that Chris has raised, and if we have to, we, we push it off a week and we can do it during one of our other events.
Is there a Farmer's Market every Saturday during the timeframe she's talking about?
I don't, I don't remember, Steve.
I don't either.
They, on their permits, Steve, there is, I can't say if that's, I mean, obviously that's going to be up to them, but we did approve every Saturday, and one night, I believe Tuesday evening.
It was a Tuesday evening, yeah, that was pretty much what they did before. Okay? So is there a motion?
For?
Let Chris go back and get information.
Yeah. I'll make that motion for Chris to...
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Thanks for doing that, Chris, appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Okay, next is item number six, Marion County Official Publications, Jake?
Yeah, so hopefully Ed will jump in here as well, we, as you guys...
Yeah, Jake, tell me what you, what you need.
Yeah, okay. I'll just give a, a quick, brief background. As, as we know, the Journal Express and the Pella Chronicle had been designated as the Marion County Official Newspapers for publications, for public meeting notices, minutes, amendments, things like that, public notices. That newspaper, those newspapers were merged into a company that does the Oskaloosa Herald. The Oskaloosa Herald does do subscriptions. They, there is uncertainty on if they will continue doing, sending those papers to people that subscribe to the Journal Express and, and Pella Chronicle in Marion County. And if, because of the move, it meets the definitions required by code to be official newspapers of Marion County. So, a couple of questions is, does, does they, does that continue to meet our requirements per code? So that departments, it's like us, we do a lot for the board, we publish, Tyler publishes, zoning publishes, there's a variety of departments that do legal publications. So the questions are, does that newspaper then continue to meet those requirements? And if it does not, then what do we do in it as an alternative? So those are the two questions we wanted to bring forth. And, and his folks have, have been doing research and, and if you want to take, take, take it now, Ed?
I certainly can. Unfortunately, I have to reach the conclusion at this moment in time that the Oskaloosa Herald does not meet the definition of a paper in general circulation in Marion County. I will indicate to you folks that the, the definition of general circulation is not defined under Iowa code. But when we look at it, I had a very good conversation with Ms. Maxwell, who I believe is the editor of the paper, and I flat out said, isn't your intention to be a paper of general circulation in Marion County, Iowa? And her comment was, we hope to be. We don't know at this date in time whether or not we will be able to do so. It will have everything to do with, at what level will the people of Marion County choose to support the Oskaloosa Herald? If you recall, when they ceased operations and, and merged, they indicated that you would be getting, if you had a subscription, two weeks free of the Oskaloosa Herald, and then you would need to contact them and, and opt in. Otherwise, you will get a refund. That doesn't meet the definition of a general circulation paper. So that then leads us to we are a paper without, we are a county, excuse me, without a paper of general circulation. And then it defaults to, in essence, the Des Moines Register. They would be considered the paper of general circulation in Marion County. I would like us to potentially reconsider this decision in about thirty days, and perhaps at that point, the Oskaloosa Herald will be in a better position to tell us that it is their intent to be a paper of general circulation. Keep in mind, there is no additional cost to us. The cost of what we pay to put legal notices in the paper is created by the legislature. It is the same whether or not you're in the Des Moines Register or whether or not you're in the smallest general circulated paper in the state. So, I will tell you that I was in contact with Pella City Council, city attorneys as well. They unfortunately have reached the same conclusion we have, that at this moment in time, we cannot say the Oskaloosa Herald is paper of general circulation for Marion County, for Marion County.
Ed, thank you for that question. Do we have to use a print newspaper?
The answer is yes. As of today's date, I will tell you that I have spoken with Ms. Sinclair already about this issue, about the fact that, granted, the newspaper lobby is a strong lobby, but we probably need to start to modernize how it is. Cause to me, it's intellectually dishonest. The whole purpose of using publication is because you're providing notice. If people aren't reading the paper anymore, let alone reading it to get their notices, what, we're just wasting money. We're in actual, in all actuality, if we're just being honest, we are a subsidy for the print journalism industry at this time.
Yep.
That's the reality.
Yep. Okay, so we had?
She said they work into it. Other, I know other places have looked to using an online presence that we would just publish on our website. But unfortunately, the way the statute's currently written, if you don't have a paper of general circulation, they give you a default.
All right, so, so right now, our only option is the Des Moines Register.
Yeah. They're the only paper with a straight face that I can say has a general circulation in Marion County.
Wow.
You can buy it at Casey's, you can have it delivered to your home. I can't come up with an analysis of how else you describe what general circulation is.
Yeah. Okay, so do we have to make a motion for thirty days?
In essence, they're, quite honestly, I don't believe there's anything for you to do. I don't believe we are, we are not declaring the Des Moines Register our paper. I've asked Jake not to ask them to send us a request to be made. It is merely, they are our default until such time as we have a paper of general circulation. So I am hopeful the Oskaloosa Herald does in fact become that status.
Okay, so we don't have to make any official declaration, we can just use the Des Moines Register up until such time as the Oski Herald has the circulation numbers, or we hear something from the legislature. All right.
Hey, Ed, and just so, I mean, I understand that you, you, you have to be a paper for two years, is that correct? Before you can be considered appointed as publication for us?
Right, so if a new paper came into existence at this time, they would have to wait two years. However, we do have an opinion from nineteen eighty-one, an attorney general's opinion, that talks about merely a change in name of a paper. If, but in essence, if you had a local organization purchase the Journal Express or the Pella Chronicle, they would be grandfathered in as if they were the same, even if they changed the name. That's the only thing that allows the Oskaloosa Herald to step in instead of these two papers.
Right.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thanks, Ed, appreciate it. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to close discussion on this item.
Make motion to close discussion.
Second?
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
All right, next we have a discussion on Veterans Affairs Director FY twenty-one compensation.
Good morning, Assistant President.
Good morning, how are you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Please identify yourself for the record.
Absolutely. I'm Commissioner Jody Marty. I'm the Chair of the Marion County Commission for Veterans Affairs. None of the three of you know me, but for those of you that don't, obviously, I'm here representing the commission. And just want to talk to the board about an annual percentage increase for Director Kuhn. Historically, he's, Mike's gotten anywhere from two to five percent annual increase. The commission is here today to ask for a three percent annual increase for Director Kuhn.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for that. Steve, Keisha, any thoughts? We've had some time to think about this.
I was just looking through the, you just recently did his performance evaluations, but, okay. Mike, can you tell us while the COVID situation is going on, how are you reaching those veterans?
By appointment.
By appointment, okay.
They come to the north door, I let them in my office, and I let them out. Looks great. I planned that way from the beginning.
Okay.
I just don't have that many calling me right now.
Things been a little tough, obviously, for everybody, but Mike had a lot of his, his contact district traffic, right?
Right.
Yeah, I miss Mike.
He misses his, he misses the hallway traffic.
It's hallway, yep. Well, hopefully we'll be back up.
It's not quiet in there, but it's not quite the same.
It's not bad, it's not like what you might think.
It's not quite the same done, drawn that he, he used to.
No, it's fine.
Mike, I have a question in regards to, since, you know, we divided this, General Systems, and then, you know, now you're just doing Veteran Affairs, have you been able to look at online, doing anything? Being able to get into the system for VA? Do you see what I mean?
I do some online stuff.
Okay, but like their applications and everything, is it going into the system of online? So, you know, later on down the future, is that, is it all paper records or can you do it online?
I do not put my applications out online to VA.
You don't, okay.
No, I submit all my applications through a veteran service officer in the federal building. So we have hands-on, right there on location, from the fifth floor to the tenth floor. And therefore, anytime we can find and resolve any problems that's going on, or the mishandling, or the misplacing of the application.
Okay.
Cause we're good that way for eighteen years. To answer your question more fully, though, my replacement someday may come in and he or she may want to go through TIF training and do some other stuff and add a conglomeration of computer equipment in and access to the VA itself directly. There is that option, if you want that training. Most counties, well, I'd say probably seventy percent of a lot of counties use that.
Okay.
They latch on to different programs that sometimes come on strong, then they're faulty and then they're changing programs. Therefore, I've just resolved, I don't need that. My, my job's a simple county veteran service officer. And Jack Sparre and I have worked this for eighteen years now, and we have no problem doing an application. Jack's a legal, just like me, national service officer, and therefore, I interview, he types up the law, gives it back to me on the letterhead, and I mail it directly to the VA. Now, the VA right now, Des Moines, closed. They all went home two weeks ago. COVID turned up. So everything now is being sent right straight to Janesville, Wisconsin. So we're sending everything now straight to there, which is fine, too. That's the way it's working now. It's, you just work with who's ever available.
So, Jody, can I ask you, if Jack is gone, is that something that you can do? Do you see what I mean?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to have, I don't know if there's any specific training that I would have to fill out to actually fill out the application, but I, I do believe that there is. If Mike's got the information, I could fill out the application, get it back to Mike, and we could continue with the mailing process.
Okay. But is that something that could be done online? That's what I'm trying to get clarity on. Do you see what I mean? Would you have to have the two people?
Right, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and I don't know that, so I'm asking that.
Yeah, I think the, I think the rub is there's training that needs to happen, and I don't know what kind of training or how extensive the training is. But I do believe there's processes that you could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, if we, if, if we need to. I think one of the things that for us, as you can imagine, and our veterans are old, a little bit older. And so, it's always been a good, again, Mike gets them because they're coming in to pay their taxes, or he gets them, so he brings them in. So their access to those things and understanding, comprehensions of us filing it that way, sometimes there's a little bit, there's a little bit of friction. I think that's one of the reasons that Mike has been doing it the way he's been doing it, and it's been working.
Okay.
But I do believe that if you went through the wickets, I think the process and the systems are probably there.
Okay.
Thank you. Steve, any questions?
No, I'm, I'm good with that. I don't have a problem with the three percent, I guess. I think that's what we've been, kind of been passing out. I would just say that next year may be a whole different story for everybody. Depends on how we wind up, or our finances look after we get through all this. So, I would be a little hesitant next year, maybe.
Yeah, I don't want to, yeah, don't want to speculate on what next year might be like. I think the three percent is well within what Mike manages in terms of total benefits. When you think about the total amount of benefits that cycle through his office for Marion County veterans. And it's a service that we need and have to have, so I'm fully supportive of the three percent.
I think one thing that you will see, I know you got the quarterly report, we saw almost three hundred veterans in that first quarter. Obviously, you're gonna see a bit this quarter just because of the courthouse being closed and the COVID situation, but well, hopefully, that's gonna start to open back up. We'll see that. That's historically where we've been at, you know, seventy-five to one hundred a month with contacts anyway. And as I mentioned before, when we talked six months ago or so, you know, it's one of the things that Mike and I talked about is how to reach out to those younger veterans.
Yeah, I have a question I had. How, how, how do you get to know those?
Yeah.
People don't even really know what they have.
They don't.
The resources they have.
So that's something I know, I see it all the time. I ask my soldiers, I'm like, hey, you know, you have a county, wherever you live, every county in Iowa's got one, and they don't, a lot of them don't know about it. So I think that falls on us on the full-time side, that they can't dodge their own, their own chain of command, that kind of thing, to get the word out. One of the things that I think has fallen to the wayside, we have what we call the yellow ribbon, when, yellow ribbon events when, when units come back from a deployment. A lot of yellow ribbon event, and that's where all of the resources come in, the VA comes in, there's a lot, E S G R comes in, a lot of organizations come in. Mike used to do those, but that's kind of, I think it, I don't know, for some reason, he just stopped getting invited, and, but he used to do those. So I think we do have some deployments on the horizon. In fact, we got a lot of deployments on the horizon this year. From now until, oh, first of next year, there'll be a lot of units going out the door. So I think as those yellow ribbon events start to happen again in two thousand twenty-one, that's getting Mike or myself or any of the other commissioners maybe at those events to spread the word.
Okay, yeah.
And then also, you know, I can't dodge every day, so I'm trying to figure out who it is out, out there that I need to get ahold of, and maybe I can go out to some of those units right now and talk about the Marion, the county. But not necessarily Marion County, that's where they're from, from great, but just the county resources that those veterans have. Some people don't even realize that they, they haven't deployed, so they, they think, oh, I don't, I can't access them. So, yes, you can, but maybe they don't realize. So explaining that, but I think that's a big thing. As Mike said, you know, him and Jack for the last eighteen years or so have been scouring the county and, and we, we're, we're helping a, a lot of veterans, and, but they're all a little bit older. So I think we need, we need to get out and gain some of the younger veterans.
Is the list of names, is that something that it's not able to be handed down? Is it because of HIPAA or anything like that? Do you see what I mean? Is it? So you can't get those from when they come back to contact them? That would be nice.
I get notified by Camp Dodge, I get notified by Camp Dodge, not recently, but when we get back on. I get copies of anybody that recently got out of service, and I can access their DD two fourteen and contact them, which I've done.
Okay.
But that's not that many. And a lot of the younger ones that are getting out have already been directed to approach the paperwork mill. They've done that before. They've even been released from active duty at Camp Dodge to the reserve centers. And therefore, their claim goes direct to the VA and bypasses me. I get involved when it doesn't work, and they're unhappy. And they come in my office and they say, why am I denied this? So I work a lot of denials, and I work a lot of court claims out in the Veterans Court in DC. It's an eight-year, seven-year, six-year process.
Right, oh, I know.
And it gets to be, if they stay with me, it gets to be rewarding. But a lot of them lose faith and they don't want to mess with it.
Get frustrated, yeah.
It's a combination of a lot of things, but I get involved sometimes on the backend.
Yes, it would be nice to be involved in the front end, and with these yellow ribbons, that would help us do that, if we get back in with that. Or just going out and talking to the units themselves.
Okay, very good.
I appreciate it, thank you guys, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for that. With that, I would entertain a motion on the proposed compensation increase for the Veterans Affairs Director.
Make motion, we increase three percent July first, twenty twenty.
Second?
Motion to support, Jake?
John?
Aye.
McCollum's?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye, very good, thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three, it's a twenty-eighty agreement proposed in Haskin County regarding maintenance of portable traffic lights. Father, say you?
It is. So, Haskin County approached me about this twenty-eighty. Because there are new requirements with the T-SIP grant that they had applied for and have contingently been, have contingently received the T-SIP grant to purchase the traffic signals. One of the requirements of their grant is to have a partner in county, a twenty-eighty with a partner in county to share the signals. That's a new requirement in the last year or two from the T-SIP program, cause they basically saw that every county is applying for traffic signals. basically saw that every county is applying for traffic signals and they want every other county to have them.
Sure.
I, I guess, so. And they've been awarding grants based on geographics and that's about it.
Okay.
So my first question was, would we be eligible for a T-SIP grant in the future for traffic signals? We already have a set of our own. The answer is no, we wouldn't.
Okay.
But when I asked the administrator of the grant program more questions, basically we wouldn't have a neighboring county that would be eligible to partner with us anyway because they've all either received grants or currently in twenty-eightys with someone else. So the benefits to us would be a second set of signals available. Just right now, we could be using a second set. We actually reached out to Lucas County, we're maybe going to go get them today at a rainbow weekend. But having a formal agreement with the county would make that much more simple. The other advantage would be in emergency situations similar to our lights, if we needed them, they would be available, whether that's flooding or something with emergency management or the sheriff's office. And they also would sync with our set of signals. Lucas County's and Mahaska County, everyone is getting the same brand.
Okay.
And they can sync, so if we ever had a project, construction project, a project of our own, that was at an intersection and we needed four signals, we can sync them at an intersection. We can't currently do that with just two.
Correct.
And so all of our closure, lane closures have to be planned around intersections.
Sure.
So that, there are some advantages. As part of the scope of services in that twenty-eighty agreement, Mahaska County is going to be responsible for the bulk of the repairs and ongoing maintenance of the light, with the exception of when we have them in our possession, if there's any damage or repairs or normal routine things that need to be done to the lights, we would take care of that when they're in our possession. We would have to put that on our insurance policy. Jake sent me the premiums, I believe, for each light, it was a hundred and five dollars, so two hundred and ten dollars per year premium, which would, if we used them once a year, would, I mean, that's, we rented them for fifteen hundred dollars a week last year, or prior to owning our own set, so.
Does Mahaska already have a set then?
No.
So Mahaska County's not eligible for this grant unless they do a sharing agreement?
Correct.
Interesting. Probably population.
That's a new add in the last couple of years. Because I think the grant administrator and reviewing committee saw that everyone was applying for them.
So do you feel that they will be using them majority of the time? I mean, do you feel like it's going to, you have a good working relationship with them?
We do have a very good working relationship with them. Out of all the counties, they are really willing to help us and meet, exchange ideas and share a lot. That, they don't have a permanent county engineer at the moment, that may change, but right now they're, everything's been good and in my six years, it's been good.
Tyler, is the language kind of modeling?
It is, with the exception of the scope of services, I did have them tweak and, because it was, it was saying both counties in a lot of situations, and I put more of that back on them because they're going to be the primary owner of the lights. So I think the first couple stanzas in, in the scope of services now say Mahaska County is responsible for rather than both counties.
Okay.
So it's, yeah. It doesn't cost us anything, it saves us money.
An insurance premium.
It was just insurance, maybe it's the minimum, but saves us fifteen hundred when we rent these lights.
We ever had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't work out, we can go back and revisit it, so.
Yeah, yeah, the out is fairly straightforward in the twenty-eighty.
Yeah, pretty enough, all right. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Make motion, we approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three.
Second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Good, very good, thank Tyler.
Thank you.
All right, next. Oh, I bet it's you again.
Yeah, I got a few here.
All right, twenty twenty forty-five.
As you know, for the last three or four years, we've been applying for sign replacement program grant. Similar to last year, we're kind of in that six thousand dollar range, I think sixty-eight hundred dollars of what Rich is applying for. This is for replacement of existing signs that are either damaged or don't meet retro reflectivity requirements or standards. So it's not for installation of new signs or any more signs, just replacement, with the exception of the reflective strips that we've been adding to chevrons. Those yellow reflective strips are allowed in this grant, up to a thousand dollars per year for new installations of those strips. So we, and we will, we have been maxing out that thousand, that thousand dollars each of the last three years. I think we have two more years and we will have all the chevrons with, posts with a reflective strip added. And in the future, the replacement of those, as long as the grant program continues, will be eligible as well.
Okay.
This is, this is only in unincorporated areas of Marion County, the cities will be responsible for doing their own, or the incorporated cities will be responsible for filling out their own application?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, this is only for unincorporated.
The only reason I say that, because I was in Hamilton this weekend and, you know, they got, I don't know why they don't do this, the stop signs are so faded you can't see them.
Once or twice a year, we send an email to every clerk and mayor and encourage them to apply.
Do they, is it difficult to you think, because they're not used to applying or not?
We've offered basically to do it for them, since Rich is familiar with the process.
Right, yeah.
I think Harvey's the only one that's ever taken this up on it.
Okay. Because I was actually in, we drove through Hamilton and you're correct.
Yeah.
It's, it's, we took a motorcycle ride this weekend and drove through there and I was like, wow, the signs are not, so.
All right, is there a motion on this resolution?
Yeah, make motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty dash forty-five.
Second.
Remy?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Next, resolution twenty twenty dash forty-two. Tyler?
Yeah, so probably for two or three years, we've been discussing a T-SIP grant for paving shoulders on Highway T fourteen north of Pella, similar to, I mean, almost exactly like we did on G twenty-eight. So both G twenty-eight and T fourteen had crash history high enough for runoff the road type crashes to justify the cost benefit to make us eligible for a T-SIP grant for paved shoulders. So this is a half a million dollar grant, this is the funding agreement for the project. I guess any, any other questions?
Any questions, guys?
We did delay the bid letting on this. Well, we had to have this agreement in place, but we had planned on having the bid letting in July. We are now going to delay that until January, just to see what the impacts of our revenues are to our farm and market account, because the matching funds for this grant are from our farm and market account.
Okay, but you go ahead and apply.
But that delay will not impact the funding, it's still in the same fiscal year.
Okay.
It's just a postponement.
Okay.
Questions?
Will this reduce our, our shoulder repair costs on every flood?
Yeah, I sure hope so. And just the normal routine repairs up there because it is there, lots of curves.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
Make motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty dash forty-two.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye, very good, thank you. All right, twenty twenty forty-four IRBM. Tyler?
So the resolution you have is actually an IRBM statement of support for our IRBM program and, and the plan. We are updating our IRBM plan and, which makes, by having the IRBM plan and statement of support, we're eligible for the living roadway, it makes us eligible for the living roadway stop sign grants, which we apply for at least one every other year. Last year, we applied for two, which is a, really a vital part of our equipment replacement and seating program in our IRBM program.
Questions? Steve?
No. For a five-year renewal.
Okay, with that, would entertain a motion on this resolution.
Make motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty dash forty-four.
Second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. Now we have a site plan review, crossroads management. Keith Davis.
Missy should be on.
Yep, I'm here, guys. This is, Keith Davis is proposing to build a forty-two by seventy-two building out at fourteen twenty-six Nevin Drive. This property was rezoned commercial in two thousand seven. Essentially just a cold storage building for Keith's personal use, but due to the fact it's on a commercial property and it meets the guidelines for site plan review, the board, the zoning commission who approved it on May nineteenth, and then the board of supervisors had to approve it as well. As I stated, there's no additional parking required, there's no additional signage to be added, no NPDS permit, since it's a small space and very minimal. The ground has to be moved for it, meets all the setback requirements, the security, lighting will be only on the building, utilities are existing on site. Yeah, so fairly simple, just because of it being commercial, you guys have to review it.
Okay, it's out by the Napa.
Yep, yep. It's about a hundred and fifty feet from the existing Napa building, sixty feet off of Highway five right away, a hundred and five feet from the Highway ninety-two exit, and a hundred and thirty feet from Nevin Drive. It's a really odd shaped parcel, it kind of looks like a tad oval, so we only have about three sides.
Okay. Thank you, Missy. Keisha, Steve, any questions on this proposal? It's been approved, it's been approved by your board, Missy?
Correct, it was approved on the nineteenth via virtual meeting.
Very good, thank you.
I don't have anything.
No questions? All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve this site plan.
Make motion, we approve the site plan for crossroads management.
Second.
Remy?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Very good. Next item, I'll declare this public hearing open, or not, sorry, this is for the notice. Got ahead of myself, Jake, it's excited. No, the next item is, we're not declaring a public hearing open, all right, is to set the public hearing date to review and approve the development agreement between the city of Pella regarding the proposed Prairie Ridge development. So there's two reasons why we, Jake and I, as we talked about, setting this agenda item for board awareness. Number one, by moving that public hearing date back, it's going to give you time to think about two things, A, the development agreement and the relationship between the development agreement and the issuance of debt. Although we will issue debt at a later date, it won't happen when we review the development agreement, now the public hearing on that, I believe, in good faith, you have to consider both. In other words, the costs that are in that agreement, that, we've had Mr. Nardini here, we've talked about it as a board over several meeting cycles, we have to be aware that once we approve the development agreement, you are in favor of the debt issuance, barring some extenuating circumstance, all right? And we, I wanted to make that clear before we go ahead and do the development agreement and then later on do the debt issuance, all right? So there has to be very careful consideration of your positions on that, and that's the reason for moving this back one date.
Okay.
Or, or one meeting cycle, okay? So with that, there's really no discussion unless you guys have a discussion item on this, it's just setting the date, like to set it for the next meeting.
And have a motion for that date.
Yep. Steve, questions?
No, I'm, yeah, we're going to set it for, you said for June ninth, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct. So review the agreement, review the costs that are in that agreement, make sure you understand those things, and then we'll go forward on the ninth of June, if that's the motion. Yes, Jake?
I was just going to point out, I believe that the version that the city of Pella approved was ordered this morning.
Okay.
So then I'll.
You'll forward that to us.
Because the city of Pella had a public hearing and considered the development agreement their last meeting.
Yeah, I think it was last week and something like that.
Yep, there have been a few tweaks to it, but at least from a cost standpoint, nothing materially has changed. Matter of fact, I think the cost came down a little bit overall. Okay? So we'll set our public hearing date for our next regular meeting.
June.
For review and approval of the development agreement for the Prairie Ridge project. So moved. I'll second that.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye, very good, thank you. Next, we have the annual evaluation for Marion County Development Director. Did you say Lieutenant? The director?
Executive Director.
Executive Director.
Doesn't matter, secretary, whatever you call it.
All right, all right. Carla, I think, we have paperwork in the stack somewhere. Very good.
Okay. All right.
Very good. And Carla's asked this be done in public meeting, didn't ask for a closed session?
Doesn't matter.
Didn't care, well, we can't do it now.
I know.
So anyway, so board, questions for Carla? Do you have anybody on from your board?
I don't believe so.
All right.
So David came with me to the budget hearing, my board chair, but I don't, I request that they be on here. Certainly welcome to talk to anyone.
That's fine. Appreciate you coming, Carla, appreciate you coming in. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're, now with the Covid stuff? I mean, I know that you've been giving us updates, but, you know, since we have some public on, what you've been working on and such, so.
Sure, many of our programs obviously have had to totally be redesigned, probably the biggest of which is our business retention and expansion program that we were just beginning as this all hit, to make those calls on our prime employers. That is a statewide program that we participate in and they have totally, they stopped the program, the program is still on pause right now, and we have redesigned the questionnaire and the whole system of the process of how it'll work. And I've been sitting on the task force that's been helping with that, and we will actually beta test it the second week in June to see how the new process works. And then the hope is that that whole program will then, once again, get restarted at the end of June. Obviously with Covid, we've changed many of the questions that were being asked of our existing industry, a lot focusing on more supply chain issues, workforce issues, as the Covid has made that more of an issue for some of our prime employers. So it will be a real good intelligence, once we get to that point. A lot of what we've been doing, obviously, is working with the Department of Economic Development, both with, initially with their small business program and then currently with some of the other initiatives that they're looking to do, and as also Director Durham, like I said in the meeting the other day, asking businesses to please take that survey and organizations, they're trying to use that to figure out what the next steps of programs are and how they're going to change programs and adapt. So a lot of what we've been working on is that, we've also, I've also been sitting in on a think tank group at the University of Northern Iowa Institute for Decision Making. They are looking at getting some federal funding to be able to, through EBA, to be able to assist our businesses and so, and our organizations and working with them of what that might look like. We've been working on potentially a dashboard for recovery so that there is data trying, trying to identify issues and the way back for business of what's happening so that we can be seeing that on a monthly basis to be able to adapt and change as needed. So we've been looking at what data can we get on a monthly basis and that, those types of things that would be indicators of economic recovery. So a lot of what we've been doing is a lot of meetings. I spend at least probably five to six hours a day on Zoom calls. It has been a lot of changing how we used to do things into new ways. The other thing that we've done over the last, I would say about month, month and a half, is that I have been meeting weekly with each of the chamber directors and the CBB director, as well as a couple of business resources that we have locally like DMAC. And we've just been kind of sharing what's each other's hearing, sharing what's going what's going on, talking about what issues they have so that then I can take those back up to the larger organizations. And, and Director Durham is working on a project right now. Uh, we don't know, um, how, how fast that'll happen, but a, a retail e-commerce potential for our small businesses. So there, it's very similar to shop where I live, that type of idea. So working on a lot of initiatives like that, um, to help position our businesses for recovery.
Okay.
Talk about funding. What, what federal funding is that?
There was state funding and federal funding. Uh, we worked.
Are you looking at something above and beyond what was already offered or?
The state funding would go to, uh, you and I. That, that, or the federal funding. They're the ones looking at some federal, uh, federal funding possibility through EBA. Um, and then we've worked with the state on funding. The state had the small business development program that was, um, just, uh, right out there very quick for that first thirty days for businesses. Uh, and we've tracked, there's been like fifteen rounds of, uh, grants added. And then the federal government had the PPP program, which was for businesses as well. And, um, so there's been several different new programs that various businesses can apply to at the state and federal level.
Have you had a lot of local businesses contact you as to get, help them through that process?
Yeah, especially the state grant. Um, there's a couple of real, um, easy things to tell businesses. One of the things that our businesses were running into is as they would log in to apply, the systems would go down and then they would lose their entire application. So just simple things like telling somebody to go get the questions, put it in a Word document and then copy and paste into the application. Um, then if the system goes down, you still have it over in a Word document. And so all you have to do is just recopy and paste until you can get it in. So a lot of the frustration with a lot of our businesses wasn't so much about, there was some about, we did have some businesses that did not understand it. We were dealing with a couple of business owners that English is not their first language. And so understanding some of those grant programs was difficult, but for most part, they did understand them. It was just the process of getting the application with the systems that were getting totally overloaded. So just some patience, some, you know, there for a while we could give them some ideas of going out at two o'clock in the morning, um, when internet wasn't so busy. I mean, there's just some of those things that, you know, we just had to, some of those systems were not built capable of handling the volume that they were taking.
Okay. All right. Um, Carla, I know that, you know, with the COVID, not being able to get out and just doing, you know, Zoom calls and such, but I guess we collect the data, but how do we help these unincorporated areas grow? You know, I was driving this weekend and, and, um, you know, you, you see little things like I know that, um, Wilson's Corner, I'll just pick them, you know, and they're using Facebook and they're using things. And I know that even we had, um, got some food from them and trying to help support them. But how do we help some of the unincorporated areas for the growth? Do you see what I'm, you know, going with this?
You know, it, it depends on the city. Different cities are at different stages as far as our smaller communities. Um, we have certainly, um, tried to work, you know, that I know why through this, we had actually one of our smaller towns contact us for some of the housing data. And I worked with them through getting back to that housing study and getting some of the information they needed for a developer they were working on in a project through the workforce housing tax credits. Um, you know, a lot of our small businesses, um, in those communities, you know, they rely on local traffic, which has been devastated somewhat by this, um, because people just haven't been out and trying to work with them. Um, although I've heard from some of our small businesses and some of our smaller towns, that things have not been quite as bad as what they thought it was gonna be. Um, so we have businesses kind of on all realms and we really try to provide a resource to help them connect with what they need. Whether it's, um, you know, like I said, whether it's those grant programs that we're kind of hot and heavy first on. Right now, we see a lot more resource needs. Um, one of the things we're talking with, we have a program that we're working with the chambers on that'll be held in November. And I think it'll be good for a lot of our businesses. We're talking about providing some of those kind of smaller businesses, opportunities to learn better about how to manage cash flow and some, some of those types of educational opportunities. So that's part of what we try to provide collaboratively with our partners and try to encourage those folks to come. It's hard because a lot of times in those smaller towns, it's really hard to get them to either go online or to go somewhere to get training. Um, and that's one of the struggles is, is figuring out how to, how to encourage them to do that, but also providing them at least the information of here's a webinar, here's, you know, here are the things, if you're struggling with this, these are the resources and places you can go. We can't force anybody, um, to increase their knowledge. We can only provide them the opportunity to do so.
So how do you, um, before the COVID, but even in the future, I mean, how do you go and promote us? Do you see what I'm saying? How do we get more businesses to come here?
Um, most of our focus has been on business retention and expansion. In rural areas such as ours, we know that eighty-six percent of all new jobs will happen with existing industry. So that's been our primary focus. Um, and we have done well, um, over the last, I think it was five years, just in the manufacturing sector, we added a thousand new jobs in Marion County. So we've been adding jobs. We have not, we don't do a lot of direct, um, like industrial recruitment. We work with our cities that have the places generally that people are in, on the industrial side. We don't do a lot with, um, what I would say the mom and pops or the, the small retail. We usually leave that to the chambers. That's kind of their focus area. Um, however, like you say, we have some small towns that do not have chambers. Pleasantville, Knoxville, Impella all have chambers, but obviously Melcher and, and Bussy and some of the other next level of smaller towns do not. Uh, but there's ways we can connect them in with other programs and training.
Yeah, I guess we need to, we've got to continue to grow and I think we can only get data so much, but we've got to start implementing. We have to. We are this close to Des Moines. There's no reason that we don't, I mean, housing, we've all, we focus, but now, you know, we're working on housing, but we gotta continue to work on businesses for retention because we are so heavily manufactured. It would be nice if we could have some diversity. Um, but I guess I'm putting a task before you to see what you, you know, what could you do there? And I would like to, you know, seize something, you know, how, how you feel that you could, um, attract something to come in.
And, and it's chilling. I mean, I think we have opportunities to attract things, um, that are doing businesses with the companies that are already here. Um, to go out and say we are going to go attract, uh, automobile manufacturer with two thousand people to come here. That's not gonna happen. It's just not.
No, yeah, right.
We have too high a salaries. We have too low of unemployment. We have too many strong existing folks that they're not gonna come into an area like this. So what we have to do is win at the, the, what I would call the stage two growth companies, which is, I recently had the opportunity during COVID, you asked what I was up to. Um, I've known Chris Gibbons for twenty-five years. He has led a very interesting economic focus in Littleton, Colorado, a focus on stage two growth companies. And I had the opportunity because I was online and I offered, um, to go through, he has converted the whole certification program online and he wanted, uh, three people to go through the program online and he, in return, would give them certification for free. So I did that for sixteen hours. Um, very interesting of how they've connected and how their philosophy is with stage two and why they focus on stage two is that they have the best potential for growth, whether that's a new company coming in or an existing stage two company. So somebody with, um, usually about fifty employees or more, um, so much in sales. And what you end up being is more kind of their market research department. So I think there's some opportunities that we can do for some of our existing industry, um, on the market research to help them increase their sales and to give them the access that our bigger companies like Pelicorp and Premier already have internally. So I think there's some opportunities there. Um, there's opportunities, uh, like you said, obviously with companies that have some kind of a connection with an existing industry here that would supplement either the services or, um, the products that an existing industry might need. And those are probably our two biggest areas of opportunity, I would say, in addition to those more, um, Main Street businesses that, that happen, um, that are more your retail and type businesses and restaurants.
Have we identified any of those stage two companies that we could be actively pursuing?
Uh, we, I know which ones we have currently here. Um, and I had, I just took the training. But, um, so, you know, that's looking at, you know, where, where are those opportunities for us to, to get some of those stage two companies and grow the ones that we have? Because what they did out in Littleton, Colorado, companies used to give, communities and counties used to give incentives for businesses to come and relocate. And they would throw tons of money at those incentives. And what Littleton did was take a timeout and they said, what if instead of providing incentives for companies to come in, we look at our companies that have the highest growth potential and we invest in them and help them grow. And that's what economic gardening is all about, is helping those stage two companies become the next Premier or Pelicorp kind of thing.
Thank you. Carla, Carla, I guess my question is gonna dovetail a little bit. These two have said. Said something kind of discouraging to me. Said it can't happen. You can't attract new, new tier one companies because we don't have enough people. Uh, we have a low unemployment rate, which used to be a good thing, not a, not a negative, right? Now it's a negative.
I, I can't say it would never happen, but I'm just saying, you have to be realistic about it. There are only so many of those kind of projects in the United States in a year.
Yeah. So, uh, one of the things for what we do in economic development, business attraction and, and doing those things and working with tier two companies and being kind of a, a co-partner with some of those tier two companies to help them get established and grow and do those types of, you can even say Wyler sort of that, right? Um, so, and those are good things. How do we move past that small incrementalism that we have in economic development in Iowa? It, and what I mean by that is we, we are so impacted by state policy. It seems like to me, a lot of these things are, a lot of these things that we propose are very incremental. But what Keisha's, what Keisha's saying is that we, without material growth, we're actually going backwards economically as a county. We add minimal amount of valuation every year. We see it in the numbers that Jake presents us. And if we get a four hundred thousand dollar increase in tax revenue, that really equates to almost no population growth materially. It's almost a net zero, but its valuation increases. Now some of it's new construction and that we'll, we'll grant it. There's some of that, but most of it's been existing stuff. So it goes to what you were saying about the existing employment base being kind of our core, right?
And the challenge being that although we're adding more and more jobs, what we have lacked as why we did the housing study is that we are not capturing those people to reside in our county.
Right. So we're trying through two major projects, Prairie Ridge and the VA to work on that issue, right?
That's what we're attempting. That's what we're attempting to do.
But we don't have a lot, we don't have much of a buffer. Okay? We are, we are as a county going to our residents and saying, we are co-partnering, so it's exactly what you just described, with Knoxville and Pella to the tune of about approximately twenty million dollars over a period of years to deal with that issue. But that will take time to resolve itself as we work through these issues and do we get the economic recovery that we hope we get as a result of COVID. Could we, through your office, I've asked you this before, and is there a way? Cause to me, the issue is public policy. Some of these things that hold us back are public policy driven. Our tax rates are too high. Iowa's corporate tax rate is too high. Our individual tax rate is too high. And we have fixated on property taxes instead of income taxes. Is, and, and I'm just telling you, as a, as a business person, if I have to pay a lot in corporate income tax or I have to pay a lot in individual income tax, you are a less desirable environment than a state that is lower. And that's been proven. Look at Texas, look at Florida, look at South Dakota, because people are gonna argue weather from those two states. So let's look at South Dakota. Why, why don't we become more active on that front? Because some of these other things, I get it. We wanna help the small businesses. We wanna partner with our cities. We wanna do kind of these joint events. Those are good things, but how do we communicate to the legislature? You've got to get your act together when it comes to tax policy. Putting a, a requirement in tax reform that says, oh, if you generate eight point one million or whatever it was of revenue, I'll give you a tax deduction. That's the governor and the legislature saying to Iowans, if you work hard enough, I'll give you some of your money back. That's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. All for the sake of saying, we do well managing our budget. So Iowa gets on lists of best managed state, blah, 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 blah. In the meantime, our state produces a hundred and ninety billion dollars of GDP where other states produce three to four times that, neighboring states. You can see my frustration. Because to me, it's twofold. Yes, we have to work with our existing businesses, but we have to do something from a public policy perspective. And this is an all hands on deck moment. Because I think what coronavirus did is it's going to accelerate all of the trends that actually could take wealth away from us faster. Five G. We don't have five G in Marion County, not to a great extent. Okay? I mean, all of those, that technology in itself is gonna be a massive shift and people don't see it. So how, how do we do that? How do we get to the place where we are more engaged in the public policy area, especially when it comes to tax policy, technology, the, the twenty-first century economy? I like manufacturing. I'm glad we got manufacturing. They use robotics. They use twenty-first century tools. But, but we need more. Otherwise, we'll get left behind. It won't be just existing technologies. It'll be that another area has five G and that's where I'm gonna put my business. So I don't think there's a specific answer here, Carla. You're hearing me rant. But I want something more from economic development. And I want it to be on the legislative public policy side because that's what hits our residents. That's what grows businesses. That's what changes things. And we get handed stuff from these different lobbying groups in Des Moines, some of which is good, half of which is garbage, but nothing that really takes care of us. Because they all opt to increase sales taxes, gas taxes and every other taxes. And then they ding us as supervisors because we raise property taxes or we use property tax. We didn't raise property tax. We just use it, but we got no other mechanism. Anyway.
Yeah. And, and you know, I, I hear your concern and, and that's certainly something that we can work towards to, um, have a, a bigger presence within the different organizations as well as ourselves at the Capitol. Um, I will say though, when we sit down to talk to our prime industry, that is not an issue that they bring up as one of the top issues of our existing industry.
Why not? Except when they get their, they get their property tax bill, they bring that up.
We don't even hear a lot.
Our assessor does.
Yeah.
So they get their property tax bill, they bring it out.
Workforce. That's all we hear.
But they don't talk about income. So they're, so we need, we need a partner. The partnership has to be, get your head around tax policy. I get it that some of our organizations don't hit on it too much. But they're denying economic reality. I've heard it for twenty-five years. But you look on every list for the state of Iowa as far as where we are from a taxation perspective and we don't rank that well. And as our population ages, as our population goes down, that's only gonna get worse because Iowa is so wedded to this monstrosity of eight billion dollars we got sitting in Des Moines. So, so I.
We gotta get in the front of this and that's, I think that's where.
There's gotta be, there's gotta be a more holistic effort than just incrementally looking at these different partnerships for small and medium sized business and, because it doesn't change. And then when you say we can't attract a new business like a three M, I get kind of disappointed. Because I know three M came here at the height of one of the greatest recessions we'd ever endured. Well, I can't imagine that was a real attractive environment either. So.
Yeah. And I, and I apologize for saying we can't. I said, it's not likely. I mean, it just.
I'm a, I'm a Reagan optimist, Carla. You're, you're, you're challenging my optimism.
I'm also trying to be realistic.
I, I get it. I, I, I agree with you.
Go to it and find if we have any industrial property in Marion County, over fifteen acres that a business could come and locate it. We have none.
But we could fix that. That's, see, those hurdles are fixable. If we bought a VA.
We could, yeah.
We could fix that. Those hurdles to me are, we, we throw those out there, but those aren't hurdles. That, that.
They are today because that's how somebody's searching. That's how the site flexor's searching and we're not getting on the list.
Then it has to be part of the process. It can't be a limiting factor. We have to say, we have the ability to meet your. We have to say, we have the ability to meet your needs, if you're interested in property in an unincorporated area, and we will work through a process to take care of that.
And one of the things I just did last week, was I noticed on our lowest system, which is the national wide system that site selectors generally use to look at available properties, a location one, it, that, Pella was the only place in Marion County that had properties listed, either commercial or industrial. So I contacted the Chamber here, I contacted our local mayors in the smaller towns, and said I would help you if they have properties, either commercial or industrial, to get them listed on there.
What about, yeah, and like Pleasantville? You know, right along there, five and ninety-two, now I get that it's, probably doesn't have the sewer and all that, but all that ground-
It doesn't have to have that, it just has to have somebody willing to sell the property. And it has to have a dollar figure towards it.
Okay.
Alright, Carla, thank you. Good to endure my rant, thank you.
Well, and, and like you said, we can figure out some ways, and it's something I can take back to the Commission to say, how do we noodle around this? How can we move the needle on what is happening at the Capitol, as far as tax reform? Where are the coalitions to build?
But can we say it this way, I, I guess simply, Carla, we get so much data. Your office generates a lot of data, and I've asked you for a lot of data over the years. And you're always one of those places, I can go and I can get that information, which is outstanding. But you gotta know what to do with the information once you get it, okay? As it pertains to legislative agendas and policy, can't we do kind of the same thing? What is the impact on Marion County of the tax rates that we have? What's the impact to Marion County on the fact, our population is, what, twenty-five percent over age sixty? Or something like that, you provided that, me, that demographic? Their, the old adage economically, don't fight the Fed, don't fight demographics, you can't win, right? So, so is there a way to show, these are the impacts from a macro perspective on Marion County? Oh, by the way, you guys need to think about this. Instead of listening to all of these lobbying groups that have their ties to money that doesn't come from Marion County?
I wasn't, when I was talking about partnership building, I was coalition building, I was talking about other counties that might be in the same circumstance.
And, and I agree with that, I think that's fine.
Because you can't go as one county and, and be able to up there have a voice unless you have a coalition built. And that may be ten counties in similar circumstances. That's why I say, you've got to noodle around, who are the coalition that could get the needle moved?
Yep.
Because you're not gonna do it realistically, as a one-off thing, generally.
Find the people that have the most votes, that could impact an election. Marion County's one of those. That's Iowa. Did I say that? Alright, thank you, Carla.
Sure.
Thank you.
Carla, what did you place for, in your budget?
It's a little tricky, and I'll walk you through this. Two years ago, I think we put four percent, and you authorized three percent, but in the printout that you received, it stayed at four percent. But the actual that I got paid was three percent. And we made that mistake again last year, but I still only got paid the three percent increase. So we're trying to fix it this year, so that the printout is what I get paid. So you see in the printout, it says like one point nine seven or two percent, but it is actually a three percent. It's just fixing the fact that what the budget was versus what I was getting paid was different, and we're just fixing that error.
Thank you. The proposal is for a, so you're recommending a three percent?
That's what, that's what you had told us to do, so that's what our Commissioner did.
Good, discussion?
Nope.
That's fine, three percent.
Is there a motion?
Motion for three percent.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good, Carla, thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you for enduring mine. It's not really you. We gotta, we gotta figure out a way to engage differently. We have to. Okay. Updates, do we have any?
I did mine this morning, with the Iowa force, I don't have any.
Steve?
I am good.
I don't have any either. Item number sixteen, is there a motion to table this until our next meeting?
Motion we table to our next meeting, which would be?
Second.
To be determined.
Right, regular meeting.
Regular meeting, okay, that's what I'm gonna do, okay.
So we're, we're table, table, table.
Took you, yeah.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
Johnner?
Thank you, thank you, those on the phone, and Steve?